Summer policies.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the July seventeenth Regular Board of Trustees Meeting. Before we begin any of the proceedings, I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Lindsay.
Present by Zoom.
Trustee Brooke.
Present.
Trustee Shara.
Present.
And trustee Turner.
Present.
Thank you. We had scheduled a public hearing for this evening to discuss the proposed fence law. However, considering the public comments that were made at the last Board of Trustees meeting in June, we've taken them under consideration and we've essentially revised the proposed law. And in order to, if we were to continue the public hearing, we really can't because we're actually submitting a new proposed law. So there will be no continuation of the public hearing. I've been advised by counsel that it's not necessary to make a motion to open and close the public hearing, essentially cancel it. We made the announcement. We will, during the course of this meeting, review the newly proposed fence law together with the revisions that have been made, and we'll discuss it openly among the trustees. And at some time in the future, assuming the board agrees, we will schedule a public hearing on the revised proposed law. So we'll move on to the regular meeting. And we'll start with my comments. So a couple of items I'd like to discuss. I don't know how many of you are aware of this, but we suffered a very large algae bloom in pond number three over the last week. And on the advice of our lakes manager, we've asked people who live around pond number three, also known as Little Weewah, not to swim in the water because the algae is essentially toxic and can cause adverse reactions. This algae bloom that we have is very similar, if you've read the local news, to a number of algae blooms that took place in Harriman State Park and Bear Mountain State Park. And we're going to treat it by using the same company that treated the pond last year for the same condition. This afternoon, I received and distributed to the Board of Trustees the contract for 2024. In light of the fact that they have lots of work to do, they told me the earliest that they can get to Tuxedo Park to treat pond number three would be in early August. And based upon that, I put an item on the agenda with respect to swimming. And my proposal will be that anyone who was permitted to swim in pond number three, which are essentially the surrounding waterfront homeowners, should be permitted to swim at the Weewah Beach without the necessity of joining the beach club until such time as pond number three is suitable for swimming. And that's on the agenda as well. I'd like to point out that I hope everybody enjoyed the July Fourth fireworks. I have had negotiations with the Tuxedo Club wherein they have graciously agreed to absorb half the cost of the police coverage for the next set of fireworks in September, as well as all future fireworks. As a result, based upon Chief Faust's estimate, the total cost of police coverage for this event is two thousand to twenty-five hundred. The Tuxedo Club will be absorbing half the cost of this event, saving the village anywhere from a thousand to twelve hundred dollars in fees with respect to police services. With that being said, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the trustee comments. We'll start with the deputy mayor, who is attending remotely today. Deputy Mayor Lindsay, the floor is yours.
I'd just like to announce the second information session for a new program called Community Solar, and it's part of our Clean Energy Campaign. The information session will be virtual July thirty-first, that's Wednesday next week, at seven PM. And I'll have that information sent out to everybody by email. And we are moving forward very well with our Clean Energy Campaign. We have more than enough residents have installed clean heating and cooling and have purchased electric vehicles. So we will be getting awards from the state based on those actions. And hopefully, people will join us next Wednesday to learn about Community Solar, which is actually a guaranteed savings of five percent on your electricity bill, and it complements with the Community Choice Aggregation Program. You can do both. One or the other, or both. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Trustee Sherer.
No comments.
Trustee Brooke.
No comments.
Trustee Turner. All right. The floor is now open for the first of two public comment sessions. And as we move forward, we'll start with anyone from the room who wishes to speak publicly on any subject. We have not yet replaced the mic at the podium, so I would ask anyone who wishes to speak to the board, please come close to the table, and hopefully, one of the three microphones will pick up what you have to say. So everyone on the Zoom call will be able to hear you. Ms. Delanyer, you are first. So please feel free to step forward. And Deputy Mayor Lindsay, let us know if you can hear. Okay? Please state. Yes, please state your name and your address, please.
Well, it's actually a beginning of my speech.
That's okay. That's fine, ma'am.
So I'm going to read. It will be easier for me to focus the sentences. And probably, I will speak a little bit slower because of my accent. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, you can. Okay. So I start. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I am Sophia Delanyer. I own the property as a sixty-six diameter. Through the years, Gwazoni, my closest neighbor, made multiple attempts to get a piece of my property for free. He filed a lawsuit in the Supreme Court to try to take that piece of my land and to prohibit me from accessing my property. He threatened to barricade the common driveway if I immediately didn't give him the land for free. Despite the evidence of trespassing and multiple calls to police, the trespassing never ceased. He's been cutting down my vegetation and dumping organic materials on my property. He keeps taking pictures and videos of me, my workers, and delivery trucks. It is a constant harassment by Gwazoni. Deer have been destroying my vegetation. They also carry ticks. I have cancer, and getting Lyme disease presents a real danger to my life. To keep human and animal intruders out, I need a fence. After several BAR and BZA meetings, I was notified that my project won't be on the BAR agenda anymore until the litigation with Gwazoni is over, which is the unrelated case. Since Gwazoni opposed all my other projects, he also initiated the revival of the chapter forty-nine. It was intended to stop me from putting up the fence. Two months ago, Gwazoni installed no trespassing signs at the property border, and he never had taken them down. Since Gwazoni created unsafe conditions, I was forced to install the camera posts and posts that block Gwazoni's access to the property with no trespassing signs, but immediately was issued the order to remove all with the threat of the fine and the court appearance. I have constitutional right to protect my property, and the village is doing nothing about it. So for now, I have actually three requests. The delegation to the BAR to develop guidelines that will essentially be an extension of the village code is an illegal and impermissible delegation of legislative authority. This impermissible delegation is allowing the BAR to draft legislation, which it doesn't have the power to do under New York law and which will be done without any public involvement. Number two, I request the exemption be added that the prohibition on perimeter fences in front yards does not include front yards that do not abut streets. And the last one, please notify me of any future meetings regarding the adoption of the proposed local law.
May we have that?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else in the room who wishes to speak? Ms. Thies? Thies, I'm sorry. Please come forward because we have microphone issues and we want everyone to be able to hear on the Zoom call.
Hello, everybody. I'm Mandy Thies. I am your new neighbor at Forty-seven Clubhouse. Thank you for inviting me to this meeting. I'm happy to meet everyone. I have recently, well, have learned through and since the purchase of the property that it is quite contentious and that there is quite a bit of history involved in the property. I have a neighbor who is especially displeased that I am there, and we are in a back and forth about the pathway and who's responsible for maintaining the pathway and what the appropriate level of maintenance of the pathway is. My understanding is that this pathway is an easement, that the city is responsible for maintaining. The current situation there is, my neighbor and I are actually in agreement, is not good and seeking some sort of remedy from the board to address the pathway situation. My preference would be some sort of more permanent situation that's not going to wash out every rain. The house, as I'm sure you know better than me, is now a year-round property. It used to be a short-term property, but I am a full-time resident. I will be living there year-round. And I would like an appropriate solution that would allow me to access my property year-round.
Thank you. We will certainly take your request under advisement, and we are all aware of the issues involving the property.
I thought you might be. And I was also wondering what my next steps might be, or so you take it under advisement? Do I follow up with you?
Well, as you indicated, the village is the owner of the easement. So the village is the only entity that can act to improve the easement.
Okay.
And under the circumstances, the Board of Trustees will consider what, if anything, can be done to improve the condition of the easement, which we all agree is in relatively poor shape.
Okay.
I understand that your contractor filled in the gnarly roots to make it a little more accessible. And so it's something that the board will address publicly at the next meeting. And you're free to attend and make additional comments with respect to how the board chooses to act on this particular issue. With respect to your relationship with your neighbor, I understand it's been very contentious. I've gotten a number of calls to come to the location. And, you know, the neighbor on neighbor is not the easiest thing to deal with, but we can certainly look at addressing the issue of the easement and the condition of the easement.
Okay. I had two other questions. One is that the neighbor has some bamboo planted that is in the pathway about chin height. Am I allowed to turn that back?
If it's an easement, only the village can contribute back. So you're essentially making a request.
Yes. To turn back.
And John will make a note of that and provide it to the DPW with respect to the overgrowth, if there is an overgrowth.
All right. That sounds good. My other concern is that I'm learning the history of the property. I'm learning from, you know, more about the previous tenants, in particular, the long-term tenants that were there for a while. And I have a concern that this neighbor, because he is the most aggressive and consistent and is maybe getting attention for things or is being catered to in a way that might be inappropriate considering the situation. And so I'm also requesting that the board, if the board decides, hey, this request is inappropriate the first time that he calls, that the thirtieth time that he calls does not change the action. So that's.
You mean the squeaky wheel should not get the most attention in this particular section?
Yes, like just because someone's the most obnoxious doesn't mean that they are the most right. So I would just like that to be taken under consideration by the board.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else in the room wish to speak publicly? Okay.
I think Chris Gow.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, we'll move to the Zoom. And Christopher Gow, you're up first.
You're on mute, sir.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Is it appropriate to talk about the fences at the moment or not?
Mr. Gow, you have three minutes to discuss any subject that you.
Okay.
Is relevant to this, to the board. Whatever you choose to discuss is your, is your choice.
So there's just a couple, a couple of suggestions in the wording. One, obviously, given the previous, previous comments is probably quite important. It's section forty-nine dash three A where it says perimeter fences are prohibited in the front yard of any property. I would recommend changing that because the front yard, for example, the, the front yard of my house doesn't face the street. So technically, my side yard faces the street. So this ruling, in order to limit fencing on the street, perhaps it should be reworded, prohibited in the area of any property in the village contiguous to a public street. I think that would clarify that. Then in section forty-nine dash five C, I think this is a very good idea, a good improvement. Within sixty days of the approval of this local law, the Board of Architecture Review shall provide a list of approved materials instead of or and design guidelines. The other, the other section was, that was taken out of the, was the fences, especially deer fences, to the greatest extent practicable, shall be set behind shrubs or vegetations, hiding the same from public view. It seems to make sense to keep that in, but then on second thought, probably not. Because the deer fence, the way we hope that it be constructed, it can be quite invisible. And if, if shrubs are lined up like soldiers in front of it, that may draw attention to it, make it even more visible. So I think taking that out is probably a good idea that you already have done. And they're my comments. Otherwise, I think it's a great improvement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gow. Just for the record, for anyone who's not aware, Chris is a member of the Board of Architecture Review because he did make a comment with respect to the section of the board that he's on. As for a response, we will be discussing the law later on in the agenda, and I'm going to ask the Planning Board Chair Jay Reich got the drafter of the law to, to comment on Mr. Gow's proposals. We'll do that later on. So if you, if you'd hang on, Chris, we'll, you'll hear what Jay Reich got has to say about what you've suggested. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on Zoom wish to make a public comment? Okay, seeing none. Anybody, anybody at all going once, going twice? You'll have an opportunity to speak again at the end of the meeting. We'll move on to the agenda. And we start with reports. The court report is attached to the record, so I would ask Police Chief Alan Faust to come up and give us the police report.
All right, good evening. For the month, the village police responded to a hundred and ninety blotters. We had three criminal cases. One arrest, as we all know of. We closed two criminal investigations. One motor vehicle accident with injury, no property damage ones. Fifteen warnings, nine uniform traffic tickets were issued, five fire alarms, one regular alarm, two medical calls. We assisted a town of Tuxedo a couple of times with a couple of incidents out on seventeen. One shot fired at twenty-seven hundred miles of patrol miles, and about nine hundred cars entered the park each day for the month. Really been focusing on the pedestrian safety, increasing the radar details and a couple of stop signs that some of the residents have complained about. So again, with the summer months, just please be cautious of everybody walking, and we'll be out there trying to do our best also to keep the incidents to a minimal.
You caught my attention with shots fired. Could you tell us what, what was, what was found, if anything? Was it unfounded?
It was unfounded, yes.
All right. So it could have been a firecracker. It could have been gunshots. We, we don't know.
It could have been. It can't, it's not confirmed.
Okay, all right. There was a loud noise and someone called it in as a gunshot.
Correct.
Okay, all right. I, I have one other question, and you're going to get started with the Gate Security Committee and trustee Turner relatively quickly?
Yes, we are. Yep, we're working on, on that, and we'll come up with some, put our heads together and come up with some good options for the village.
Great. And those will be discussed publicly at the upcoming board meetings in terms of improvement for gate security. Thank you so much. Any trustees have any questions of the chief?
No.
Trust, Deputy Mayor, anything you want to ask the chief about his report?
No, not at this time. I will follow up with the chief when I come back about the additional radar screens.
Okay, that's great. And with respect to radar screens, I spoke to a couple of traffic engineers who are going to provide proposals for the required traffic study so we can reduce the speed limit. One of them had a question that I couldn't answer. That digital sign that we have, does it record vehicles so that the engineer could pull out data which would indicate over whatever period of time he or she wants to check the speeds of the vehicles as they pass that digital, that digital sign?
I'm not sure if the one we have right now is capable of that. I will find out and let you know.
Yeah, would you please, because the engineer was wondering if he could, if he gets the job, if he could in fact pull data out of that and determine what speed people are traveling along the causeway as recorded by the speedometer. Thank you so much, chief. Okay. Next, DPW Supervisor Boss.
For the last month, patched potholes, Weewah Road, Westlake Road, Tuxedo Road, Lowerlard Road, Continental Road, cut grass throughout the village, weed whacked various streets, removed a fallen tree on Eastlake Stable Road. Some work that we did over at Weewah Park repaired the broken storage shed doors, installed a new back, basketball backboard, added fill to the parking lot where you pull in. There was, there was a spot that was low and it caused a big puddle every time it rained. We also assembled a new lifeguard chair that was purchased for Weewah Park. I've also ordered some drain, drain pipe. We have some drainage projects upcoming. So we're actually starting one on Stable Road tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll be done by the end of the week. Forest water and sewer finished up second quarter meter reading. We repaired an inch and a half water line on Continental Road this past week. Did various markouts, obtained meter readings requested by Denise. Two water meters were replaced. One irrigation meter was installed. We had a couple of sewer blockages. We cleared one on Eastlake Road and one at the keep. And some work we did at the sewer plant installed new check valves on our sludge pump. Also installed a new suction hose on one of the sludge pumps. And we also repaired a sewer manhole on Lowerlard Road.
I have one question for you. You and I communicated about what appears to be a bit of a road collapse on Tower Hill Road East going up the hill.
That's part of the, what I said, I ordered drain pipe to make those repairs.
So the members of the public know that the DPW is on it. It requires a pipe to be installed. It's been ordered, and once that pipe is put into place, then the, the road will be filled and.
Correct. It doesn't make sense to try to make a repair now, and if we get a heavy rain, it's going to happen again. So.
Thank you.
To put cones around it for now. Until we get the pipe, hopefully, we can get started on that next week.
Thank you. Any questions from the members of the board for Supervisor Boss? Deputy Mayor Lindsay, anything you want to ask?
No.
We're all good. All right. Next, we have John Ledwith, the Building and Land Use Officer, advisor to the board and many other hats.
We received one certificate of occupancy request since the last meeting. We have approximately ten projects that are ongoing with no substantial problems to date.
Water Department attached utility deputy clerk Denise Spaltoff is attached to the record. Treasure Reports Elizabeth, anything you want to say on the record while we're here?
No, I think they're self-explanatory.
Great. Deputy Mayor Lindsay, you talked a little bit about the Climate Smart in your trustee comments. Is there anything else you'd like to add with respect to Climate Smart update?
We're just finishing up the Clean Energy Campaign, and next month I will have a report on where we stand with certification. And the awards we can expect to receive from the state.
Awards being money, right? Not, not certificates, awards being money, right?
Money, yes.
As compared to trophies, which are very nice, but really don't serve any purpose. Okay, glad to hear that. The Capital Planning Committee report was to be given by the Chair Joanne Hansen. She is not available tonight. However, I'd like to compliment the committee, which has been meeting every Monday to discuss the issues that face the village in terms of long-term planning. And I turn to trustee Shara, a member of the committee, if he wants to make any comments on that. I know we have a separate issue of the Oxygenator later on.
Nothing other than I think Joanne Hansen has really done an excellent job of organizing the committee. And our village, as everyone knows, has a lot of issues on the infrastructure front. But we're making very rapid progress. I know you received a, an email from her earlier a few days ago identifying very specific issues that we were focused on. An immediate issue being the Pond Three Dam, and I know actions being taken there. I'm separately going to be giving a, a report on next steps with respect to dealing with an issue that we have in Tuxedo Lake. Like you said, that'll be on the agenda later. But separately, and Gardner Hempo was going to be here tonight. Unfortunately, he's on a flight. But we are doing a full survey of all of the village's assets. And Gardner will be presenting, you know, a proposed path forward on how to document that so that we have a system in place for future boards to, as Jim Hayes likes to say, get a baseline and so that we can figure out how going forward we can take care of our, our infrastructure.
Thank you, trustee Shara. Deputy Mayor Lindsay, you're also a member of the Capital Planning Committee. Is there anything you'd like to add to trustee Shara's comments?
No, I think trustee Shara did a great job summarizing where we stand right now. But I agree with him that our Chair Joanne Hansen has done a great job organizing, and I feel that we'll be able to report quite soon more comprehensive plans.
Thank you. All right. That concludes the reports. I'm going to make a motion, be it resolved that the board shall add all written reports to the permanent record. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Deputy Mayor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Five zero, Elizabeth. All right. Next, we have approval of prior minutes. Has every member of the board had a chance to review the minutes of the June fifth, twenty twenty-four special meeting, the June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, and the July eighth, twenty twenty-four organizational meeting? Anybody have any comments, corrections, additions or deletions they'd like to make to those minutes?
I only reviewed the July.
Okay, yeah. So you would not vote. We'll do them separately, two separate motions. Any, any other trustees, deputy mayor, any comment?
No.
Let me make two motions then. One motion is be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the following meeting, June fifth, twenty twenty-four, and June twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
Four ayes and one abstention as trustee Turner was not on the board at the time. Now, the second resolution, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes from the July eighth, twenty twenty-four organizational meeting. I make the motion. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
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 unanimous five zero. Okay. Unanimous five zero. Okay. We move now to old business. Um, I'd like to report, uh, reporting that we have received. Um, I have not seen it yet, but we have received this letter of resignation. Uh, from the chairmanship of the bar by Ryan Lynch and I'd like to say on behalf of the board. That we thank Mr. Lynch for the time and effort he's put into that position. He will remain a member of the Boar- Bo- Board of Architecture Review. Uh, but the chairmanship uh, upon his resignation is declared vacant. And we will now move, uh, first of all, to accept the resignation. Do I have a second to accept the resignation? Of Ryan Lynch from the Chair only of the Board of Architecture Review?
Second.
Second by Trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, five nothing. Uh, now let, we, the next resolution is to appoint. A new bar chair for a term of one year ending July seventh of twenty twenty five. Um, and as your mayor, under state law, uh, village law, section four, four hundred. It is my duty and obligation to make a nomination for that particular position, subject to confirmation by the Board of Trustees. And I would like to speak briefly about the person I've chosen to nominate. Um, Stephanie Rinza um, lives in Chastalou. She is an owner of Chastalou. And has served on the bar since January of twenty twenty three, when she was appointed as the former mayor. Uh, in her professional work, she has been heavily involved in design work. Uh, she has been an advisor to museums. She has uh, worked on the design. Uh, or the redesign of the Vanderbilt Mansion in Manhattan. She has worked on the redesign of a property in London. Uh, she was good enough to provide to the board photographs of her design work. And most importantly, in her tenure on the bar, since January of twenty twenty three, she has provided exemplary service. And it is my belief that she will do a wonderful job as Chair. Uh, members of the bar have, members of the board have had an opportunity to speak to her. Uh, and she's responded, as I understand, appropriately to their questions and I certainly have faith in her chairing the bar. Um, and so based upon my evaluation of her and it's my duty and my obligation and my privilege. To offer her name and nomination for the bar chair for a period of one year. Uh, and I make that resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Sharer. Any discussion by the board?
Um, I'll just note, I know you haven't seen uh, Ryan's uh, letter of resignation. Um, but he is uh, indicated his support for Stephanie's uh, role as chairman as well.
Good, thank you. Uh, any other comments from the, the trustees present? Uh, Deputy Mayor Lindsay?
No.
Okay.
No comment.
Uh, so did I get a second? I'm not sure. Trustee Sharer, a second. All right. Uh, all in favor of the appointment of uh, Stephanie Rinza to the bar chair for a period of one year? Commencing immediately or upon her signing the oath book. Uh, say aye.
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 Aye, uh, unanimous five zero. Congratulations, Ms. Rinza. Look forward to your continuing service. Okay, uh, next item is discussion of the speed signs. Deputy Mayor, are we tabling that till next month?
If we could, I just uh, don't have all the data with me.
Okay, that'll be table till next month. We'll take it up again. The third matter of old business is a discussion of the revised chapter forty nine fence law and for that. Um, I hope everybody has a copy. If not, uh, we'll get you one. It was certainly published online. And I would ask the Planning Board Chair, Jay Rashgat P E to take the floor and tell us uh. How the revised law differs from the original proposed law which has been withdrawn and, and respond to. Uh, Mr. Gao's comments and any other matters he wants to discuss with respect to this proposed law. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Um. So after the last meeting, we took the comments, the public hearing, we took comments under advisement. Uh, and there was some discussion uh, with me and the mayor and uh. Jake Lindsay, the, the Chair of the B Z A. An attempt to sort of simplify the intention and clarify uh, the rules. Um, we put deer fences as a standalone item because that's really what we're talking about besides dealing with perimeter fences. We also tried to adjust the language to address concerns about uh, the, the. Uh, bars purview for determining materials and, and aesthetics. To, to clarify that they would, would. Make those decisions that the Board of Trustees would then refine. Um, to speak to uh, Mr. Gao's comments, um, the, the uh. Material samples or design guidelines, that comes from my understanding of those two terms as an engineer. So samples are here. This is the item and a design guideline is something more like. The fabric of the fence shall be a black plastic mesh with squares of three quarters of an inch and whatever. Um, putting it, or or and I leave that to, to legal folks, whether, which word is appropriate there. The question about. Along roadways, um. I have some concerns about what happens to a small lot that has multiple road frontages. But that's a question that can get looked into as the board's discussing it. I think there also might be a little bit of confusion about what a front yard is. I, I don't have the code with me. I don't have the exact wording. But the front yard is not determined by where your front door is. It's determined by where the road is. So the front yard is the yard that faces the road. So a property that is a corner lot has two front yards and a property that has road on three sides, like the property going all up. Towards the school actually has three front yards, which is no fun if you're on that property, but. Um, but we can look at that further as people like. Um. And that's what I got. You guys got questions?
Any questions from the board present? Any of the trustees want to discussion? Deputy Mayor?
No, thanks.
You know, um, let me just say from my perspective that Jay and Jake and I sat down right here and. We went over the comments that were made by uh, Bar Chair Lynch with respect to his objections regarding. Uh, the Board of Trustees taking on responsibilities that are more appropriately designated to the bar. And we, we essentially agreed, we would set those aside and allow bar to make the design determinations with respect to the fence. But what I wanted to do is to ensure that through this legislation. There would be no perimeter fences along the front yard, the front of, uh, yard, whatever the, however it's defined.
Yep.
As the property, because we don't want properties to be enclosed in terms of the view shed as people drive along. Through Tuxedo Park. We, we don't want fences on, on, uh, along the fen- along the road. So I believe that this particular revised proposal addresses that. Uh, also, it, it has a set additional setback of twenty five feet with respect to any other type of fence. Which I, I think is appropriate because as we travel around the park, we see there are a lot of deer fences and they are set back. And I think it's best that they be set back because even if they're only deer fences, they, they interfere with, again with the view shed. If we have them directly on the perimeter line of the property. So I understand Ms. Delinor's comments at the beginning, but at the same time. I think to preserve the historic nature of this village, which is open and welcoming. That we should adopt this particular law, subject to any modifications we may come up with between now and when we have, have a public hearing. That will continue the tradition of, of the founders who wanted. Open and, and, and wanted open properties and didn't want to stand up like Old Westbury. In, in Long Island, which if you ever been there, is nothing but a series of hedges and fences and you can't see anybody's house. So that, that's why I introduced this and um, that's why I'd like the board to consider it and. Ultimately schedule a public hearing and, and then debate the, the efficacies of this law. Any other comment from anybody else?
No, I think we have a wordable set of things as you propose them and if somebody wants to change them. The appropriate procedure is to go to the zoning board and get approval for. A change or.
Variants.
And a, a variance.
Yeah.
Kind of change.
Yeah.
So I think just having it clear and simple is an improvement, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you, sir. And the only other thing I'll offer is if anybody comes up with questions, I'm perfectly happy to meet with. You individually or in whatever size group is appropriate.
So what I suggest is that we fine tune this.
Yep.
For the next meeting.
Yep.
And schedule a public hearing uh, at the next meeting for sometime in the future and then move forward with it. Everybody okay with that?
Sounds like a good plan.
Sounds fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we move on to new business. Um, and I turn to Trustee Sharer.
Right.
With respect to the Tuxedo Lake Oxygenator and the need for the same.
So um, I'm actually gonna um, ask Jim Hayes, if you don't mind. To describe the issue that we have in the lake with the anoxic um, levels and uh, if you don't mind. Uh, I'm, and, and then I can talk about the proposed, yeah, if you don't mind, and then I can talk about the proposed solution.
Do you want, do you want to sit? Do you want to sit?
No, no, I'll stand.
Okay.
I can still sit.
Unprepared, but you are fluent in this topic.
The, the lake has, the water quality in the lake is in fact declining and it's. And all of that decline has been a reduction in water clarity. Uh, an increase in phosphate loading, both in the surface waters and the deep waters. And a shallowing of an anoxic layer which develops in the late summer and early fall. And what happens is that uh, because the lake stratifies in the summertime. The wa- the sun warms the surface and makes it less dense than the deeper water. And so there's no mixing of surface water down into the deep part of the lake. So there's no oxygen carried from the surface. From the air into the deeper part of the lake. So as the, as the carcasses of the algae and. Zooplankton sink and rot, they decay. It's a slow burn and they absorb, they use up the oxygen which is in that. Deeper part of the lake. So the lake is actually dead from uh, about it by, by September. From about a depth of eight meters all the way down to the bottom. And anything that's living is living in the upper eight meters. So the, the immediate problem which Josh is addressing is that this. Layer as it becomes shallower and shallower approaches the water intake pipe. And this uh, anoxic water has high, high concentrations of iron and magne- manganese. And sulfur dioxide which gives it a bad odor and, and a bad taste. So it's not something that you're gonna wanna drink. Uh, I'm not saying, I mean, I think actually having very low oxygen content is, is unhealthy, but I don't wanna get into that because I don't know about that. But I, I think it probably isn't. So. Josh's solution is, I, I, you know, I think it's a good one. Uh, I'm not aware of where this has been done before. It would, it might be good to talk to people who've done it before and see. What hurdles they ran into, but it's to introduce oxygen artificially into the deep waters of the lake. And oxygenate that water which hopefully will reduce its thickness. That will have a couple of effects. First of all, it will remove it from the water intake pipe. Secondly, less of the, uh, 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 less area of the lake bottom will be covered by this anoxic water. And then the anoxic water actually brings phosphate and iron and manganese out of the sediments. So there'll be less phosphate, iron and manganese introduced into the anoxic layer. So that will be a, a general improvement. But what I wanna add, and, and, and I'm sorry, I'm probably talking. But this is not a solution. This is not a cure. This is a mitigation. It's a Band-Aid. Uh, you, you turn off this thing and it'll go back to where it was. So you're paying a lot of money for. Just to resolve this problem, but the problem can also be addressed by better management of the watershed. Better management of people's lawns who live around the lake. Floral or vegetative borders at the lake. All of this can help a lot. The stormwater pipes which are emptying into the lake directly. And we don't know how many, what kind of pollutants are in those stormwater pipes. And so Josh is, I think, I think he's looking into that. And, and that would help a lot. So will this cure, this, this is, this is a possible cure. But it's a long-term thing. It won't happen overnight. It'll take, may, may take decades. But if it's gonna take decades, it's a good idea to start now. And, and get it and get after it because otherwise you're just gonna be paying out money for this oxygenation. That'll go on and on and on. It'll be. Big expenses every year until you get the watershed in shape.
Well, thanks, Jim. That was uh, uh, way better than I could have done. The uh, one question for you. Will this uh, um, help with the blooms? That we uh, uh, sometimes face, like for example in uh, Pond Three?
What about it?
Will the oxygenation of the lake help with those? No, okay.
That, that has to be treated with chemicals.
Yep.
I've, I've. Operal place is what we used to use. I have one question. You said it's anoxic below twenty five feet, right below eight meters? Yeah. Okay. It, 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 late in the season, not now. Late in the season, right, late in the season. Can you dimensionalize for me what percent of the lake, what percent of the water in the lake? Is it depths below twenty five meters? No. We have any idea? I mean, I could, I could probably uh, figure it out, but I don't have that number. Yeah, no, I just, we'd be curious to know. Um. Why, why do you wanna know? Well, you know, you wanna understand how serious a problem it is and you wanna understand. For instance, I wanna hear what you have to say about oxygenating the lake, you know? Some of you have been to Geneva in Switzerland and they have a huge beautiful fountain. Which oxygenates the lake there. Right. And, you know, we could see an absolutely, a community resource where people could fundraise for a beautiful fountain. Right. Somewhere in the lake. I mean, there are a lot of ways to, 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 to play it because that refreshes the water. And how much water is oxygenated through that is sort of relevant question because it ties to how serious the problem is. And that's why I asked the question about, because twenty five feet is pretty deep, right? And I don't know what percent of. Well, the lake is like sixty five feet deep. So it's. What, you have to go out.
That's deep, yes, yeah.
Far, right, so I just, I'm just a, a question saying if we're gonna look at oxygenation, we'd like to get idea of the dimension of the problem being.
I, I think that'll be part of the study.
Uh, yeah, okay, so all I'm saying is that was.
We don't have all the answers right now, Paul, but the, these are the types of questions that we're gonna want answers to.
No, I'm just, thank you for the perspective. It's good.
I, I do have one question, Professor. I, I don't know whether you know the answer to this, but these intake pipes, how large are they? Do you have?
Are you gonna do intake pipe?
Yeah, do you have it? Yeah, unfortunately. He left, okay, cuz I, I was, you know, as an alternative, I guess it's a temporary solution. Um, and I, I, if you were to take, I don't know where these pipes are on the lake and, and we'll have to find out from the DPW. But since the first twenty five feet um, is well oxygenated and these pipes are, are at that. Uh, ordering that level, if you were to attach an elbow and raise the intake level. To twenty feet or to eighteen feet, just a, a, you know, an attachment that have to be done by divers, welded or whatever. Is that, is that a, a possible temporary solution? Uh.
It could be.
Yeah.
I think it could be, but again, I, I think you gotta talk to DPW.
Of course, and, and probably more than that, talk to the lakes folks, but as, as a mechanical solution that doesn't, as an alternative and I, I don't. I'm waiting for, for, you know, the trustee will tell us about oxygenation, but you know, essentially elbows that go up, so the, the intake comes from a higher level of the lake. Rather.
So I think, I mean, that, I think that would be a good temporary solution. What I'm gonna propose, I think is, I'd say. Uh, as Jim indicated, a temporary solution as well. Um, maybe more of a medium-term solution. I think the issue we have is because it, it takes decades as uh, the professor said. Um, um, to heal this lake. And it's not clear to me that as a community, we're doing what we need to do to allow it to heal. In fact, we could be doing exactly the opposite. And so you have this anoxic level that's steadily rising. And so I think the, the point. And so I think the the point is, and you'll see what I'm gonna propose here in a second, and maybe I should just get on with it. This, I think, is a temporary solution. The longer term solution is to better manage our our watershed. So our lake manager AJ Reyes works with G G E I Consulting. Been working with us for a number of years. What they're proposing, and this would be pre costing work, so this is not actually proposing a system. This is doing the work necessary to identify the best type of system for the village. These are not inexpensive systems, but I think we're gonna wanna understand what. The universe of options are. Whether or not we can have a a beautiful fountain. You know, with a, you know, maybe a statue of a renowned trustee. I'm just kidding. You know, what the options are, and Paul, honestly, I don't know if that, the fountain actually works for a for a lake of this size. As an example, but I think, you know, G E I will be able to answer that. And so and I'm gonna read some of this because I think. It it's helpful. So the G E I will gather information on the capital and the ongoing cost, maintenance requirements and site design specifications. For an onsite compressor, based on the site specific data, professional experience and similar case studies. G E I will propose performance standards to the village to use in contracting and evaluation. So the deliverable for the task is gonna be a short letter detailing the system overview. Total cost of the system, performance standards, similar case studies, and a virtual meeting. To discuss a letter and the potential oxygenation system. And I think what they'll do is just provide the options. But my understanding is this system could cost anywhere from a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's not inexpensive. I know it's not a lot of money for T I A A.
They they look at this for the wee little lake.
Yeah.
And they realize the little lake wasn't deep enough.
Yeah, and for it, yeah.
Full for.
I think a fountain could work there.
Yeah, but but yeah, the the answer is, I think it's a great thing to do.
Yep.
And, you know, what Jim said was, it's a problem in late summer, early fall. As opposed to all year round.
Yep.
And the D E I report is gonna address that issue, so I think it'll dimensionalize it. We'll have a sense of what to do, but there's a commitment to do it because we wanna protect the watershed.
And you know, the other question I'm gonna have is what's the useful life of the system? If it's a thirty year system, you're amortizing a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand over thirty years. You know, it starts to dimensionalize the actual annual cost, right? And what does it cost to maintain it and and run it? So we'll get a lot of information. Anyway, the pre costing work costs eighty three hundred dollars.
And it comes to the water budget, right?
It should, yes.
Yeah, it should.
So so my proposal is to to move forward with the pre costing work. And second, thank you.
All right, let's turn this into a resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, be be resolved that the board trustee, board trustees authorizes the expenditure. Of eighty three hundred dollars to.
G E I consultant.
G E I consultants prepare a study or a report. With respect to the various options for oxygenation of the lake. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Turner. And oh, and also as an addendum, this money will come out of the water budget. It's a budget line expense. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, congratulations, five zero. Okay. The next item is we we learned a couple of weeks ago. That there is no defibrillator at the Weewa Beach.
Sorry to interrupt, may I ask you something to the lake issue? There are bacteria, like really good bacteria that are not chemical. And that are gonna take care of everything, putting organic matter in there. And they will clear the water and actually they're working really, really fast.
Okay, well, how about we discuss that off the record? Or you can put your comments on the record at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
So let's let's move on. As I said, there's no defibrillator at the at the Weewa Beach. And the police department has only one in one of its vehicles that patrols. So I asked Matt Tenari, who is the chair of the Weewa Committee. Whether he believes it would be appropriate to have a defibrillator and mask for the Weewa Beach. And he heartily agreed. And we initially got Captain DeVore of the ambulance corps to come up with a proposal. And she found a unit which is compatible with the Tuxedo Ambulance Corps. So if they respond, they don't have to change the pads on a person, but could actually communicate with the unit through their own. Their own computer system. And the initial cost was was thirty five hundred, which seemed like a lot. So I went to the chief and the the chief had contacts in the in the industry. And he came out, he was able to get a quote, I think it's about fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars, which is a substantial reduction. So I would ask whether the the board of trustees has any interest in making this purchase before. And and as soon as possible, in in the, in the hopefully unlikely event that we ever need to use it at Weewa Beach. So I'll make the motion that we authorize the purchase of the defibrillator and mask. In a sum not to exceed, say seventeen hundred dollars. I think it will be less. Do I have a second? Any discussion from the board about this particular purchase?
Melissa, do we have a like anti choking thing too, or just?
I hate, I hate to say that I am not versed at all in 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 CPR, okay? The lifeguards are, they're certified, they know how to use the equipment. I cannot answer your question. We can certainly ask the lifeguards.
If we don't, I might recommend I get one.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll do that next month. All right, great. So we have a second, all in favor?
Now, I just had a, I just had a question if Elizabeth would know what budget line that would come out of.
Uh, so this, this one you're talking about right now?
Yes.
I would say seven one four oh, which is the recreational line. That's usually what we charge the Weewa expenses to.
Okay, thank you.
We may have voted, I've already forgotten. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous, we'll we'll make that a purchase. Thank you all very much.
And can I just ask a quick question? I'm sorry, who seconded that? I just didn't see it. Uh, thank you.
As I mentioned in my opening remarks, there's an issue of an algae bloom in in pond three. Last year, we had the same problem. We hired Solitude Lake Management to apply chemicals. As Professor Hayes indicated, that's the only way you can deal with it. I've contacted Solitude after a little bit of back and forth last week and earlier this week. I finally got a contract for twenty twenty four from Solitude. Which is the same amount that they charged us to to treat the algae in pond three in twenty twenty three. So I would make a motion that the the board of trustees authorizes the mayor. To sign the contract with Solitude Lake Management, which I will do immediately. And return it to them, and that amount is, just give me a minute. Somebody else can pull it up, it would be appreciated. Just the, just the 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 net amount. It came this afternoon.
Yeah, I caught it.
Yeah.
Two thousand two hundred and eighty eight.
Okay, two thousand two hundred and eighty eight dollars for treatment of the algae bloom that exists now in pond three. With the understanding they may not be able to treat it till August and all in favor? Oh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from trustee Turner, all in favor? Aye, aye. And in conjunction with that, I would ask the the trustees to approve authorization. For the waterfront owners in pond three to utilize the Weewa Beach during regular operating hours without any cost. And need to join the Weewa Beach Club. And at the request of Matt Tenari, we'll provide a list of the waterfront owners over at pond three. So that his checkers will know who's permitted to enter during the period of time that pond three is not swimmable. So I move we we authorize all waterfront owners of pond three. Be permitted to utilize the Weewa Beach during regular operating hours without fee. Until such time as the pond three becomes swimmable again. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Turner, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero, and we'll have the office or Denise notify all the waterfront owners immediately. That they're entitled to use Weewa Beach without fee. The next item on the agenda comes from the chief. He has advised me that, as as you may know, when someone holds a large party in the park. They request the police officer for private duty to make sure that vehicles are properly parked on the street or direct traffic. He's having great difficulty getting officers to come down for a two hour shift. For which they receive seventy five dollars times two or a hundred and fifty dollars. The other twenty five dollars per hour, a total fee of a hundred dollars per hour goes to the village. And he has requested that we increase the minimum time that the officer is hired for private duty. From two hours to three hours, which means the charge to the resident will be three hundred dollars. Of which the officer will receive two hundred and twenty five dollars as part of his paycheck. And we'll have an easier time getting officers to come in on weekends or evenings or whenever anybody throws their parties. So I would make a motion that we increase the minimum to three hours at a hundred dollars an hour for private duty. Worked by our village police officers. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. Okay, tha- that concludes. Hold on for a sec, make sure. Oh, one more item. An added item involves the Pond Three Dam. We had a meeting, John and Jeff and Joanne Hansen and I this morning or around. This afternoon on the issue of the Pond Three Dam. After the earthquake in April, Pond Three Dam, which is at this, at this north end of Pond Three. Began to suffer from leaks. Initially, when they were observed, they were sort of high pressure leaks, like streams coming out from between the stones. And we felt it was important that the dam be examined for possible repair by professional engineers. We received, we requested and received a number of visits from professional engineering firms. And a series of proposals to to analyze the problem with the dam. Since that time, we have noticed that the, what I will call high pressure leaks. Which are streams of water coming out of the walls have disappeared. And based upon that, while we don't believe that the dam doesn't need remediation or repair. We had a meeting this morning and we reached the conclusion, what we would like to do is ask our special engineers Weston and Sampson. Who prepared a two page evaluation in May to come back ASAP. To perform a further evaluation in light of the changing conditions at the dam and make a recommendation. The recommendation may be the same, which is we have to lower the level of the lake of the Pup Pond Three in order for them to do an inspection of the of the stonework. But we all agreed, we agreed this morning that what we would do is request that Weston and Sampson come back. Hopefully next week, amend their or supplement their initial report provided to us, and then we'll move forward from there. Because what was happening in April and May, i- it looks very different now. That you don't see any spouting water coming out, and the reason for that may be only an engineer could explain. So I would request that the that the board approve the expense. And we don't know what it is yet because obviously we have to ask them what it would cost to come back and re inspect the dam as soon as possible. Issue a supplemental report with recommendations as how to proceed from that point. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by trustee Brooke, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And that was an added item to the agenda. We move past new business to audit of claims. Treasurer Dougherty, any any comment on audit of claims?
Uh, just to note for the record that the audit of claims for the general fund is the, in the amount of two hundred fifteen thousand six hundred. I'm sorry, seven hundred sixty eight dollars sixty six cents. The audit audit of claims for the water fund are in the amount of thirty four thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and three cents. And the audit of claims for the tour fund are in the amount of fifteen thousand sixty two dollars and seventy nine cents.
Thank you very much. And budget transfers, any budget transfers to report? No budget transfers to report. Okay, we've moved along rather quickly and we've reached closing comments. It is now the chance for the public, a second opportunity for the public to speak. And Ms. Thies, do you wanna readdress the board? Okay, please come forward.
All right, it's Thies. It's okay, it has a ridiculous number of letters, it doesn't make any sense. I forgot to ask about the garbage situation because we are at the bottom, like, as you know, the house is kind of up this pathway. And there is no garage at the house. And and my neighbor is very not interested in working together on this problem, sorry. So.
Uh, Jay will get you.
Oh, my hero, thank you. Uh, so the question is.
Where do you put your garbage cans? And that's a very good question.
That's approved by the board.
Yeah.
Right here, it says, I can do this thing.
So. You have to, it has to be in a place where Sterling Carter can pick it up. So the question becomes, and you may or may not know the answer, where does your neighbor put his, where do they put their garbage?
I am not sure. So I don't have a problem putting it on the street. But I've also been informed by the other neighbors that there's a bear that likes to walk on the pathway. And so I am like, where does the garbage go? But the bear isn't going to, and also how fast can I run away from the bear on a pathway?
Yeah, do not, do not run from a bear.
You punch the black bear, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, play dead with the grizzly.
Okay, I I think that's a very important question. And we will discuss that with John and see if we can come up with some solution. I I would like to know where the, it's the Donnellys who live at right next to the path, where they put their garbage. Because obviously that's cert, that's an area that's serviced by Sterling Carter.
Right.
So we'll, we'll figure out where they do it and then we'll have an answer.
Right, and I was also told that they like come to your house and get the garbage. Is that a true statement? But my house, maybe they wouldn't go to.
There, there is a service that allows you to keep garbage by assuming of a driveway by your garage. And that the Carter will pull up into the garage and pick up your your garbage at at the garage, but you don't have a garage.
I don't have a garage and I don't have a driveway, yes, yes. However, I would like to get the board to consider possibly, I did have it looked at and it's at a grade that could be paid.
Well, thi- this is a discussion for another day.
Yes, I understand, it's gonna be controversial, but I just wanted to put it forward as my preferred solution would be to have a driveway.
And that will require, that will require an application to the, to the, to John and and review by the bar.
Yep.
Maybe even the planning board, sure. So that's, that, that's, that's a question for another day, but we appreciate.
That's fine, meanwhile, if I put the garbage at the bottom of the path as a stopgap. I can have some sort of acknowledgement from the board that that's okay to do.
Gentlemen, deputy mayor?
I would say absolutely, I mean, the the path is a village property. And the village can authorize a place where you can deposit trash can. So I'd be all in favor of that.
With the bin though.
That's another question though, so I don't have a garage. So if, right now, inside the house, you know, I'm not producing a ton of garbage, it's just me and this tiny house. And if the garbage comes twice a week, I can take it to the curb, but if I have a garbage can, I'm worried about the bear.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Um, that if you like, I can contact Sterling because they may know where the previous resident put garbage.
That would be fabulous.
So if you leave me your phone number, I'll call them first thing tomorrow morning and then I will call you with the answer.
I appreciate that very much, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much. Any anybody else, Ms. Delnar, do you wanna, you have any additional comments you wanted to make?
I was talking about clearing the water instead of putting chemicals in there.
Right.
If you put like, there are special. If you put, like, there are special strains of bacteria that are going to, uh, disintegrate anything rotten organic matter. They will turn it, if there is a fish in there or there are not algae, but some good, uh, aquatic plants, it will be food for, for all of that. And they will clear water like almost, almost immediately.
So that's clearing versus oxygenating. I mean, we have this dead zone.
Right.
I don't think the bacteria are going to deal with the dead zone.
Yeah, they will, they will, they go, they penetrate absolutely everywhere. I don't know about sixty-five feet deep. But it will be more than just eight feet. They will go much deeper because it is food for them.
Do you have like any?
Uh, I could, yeah, I could look it up, actually. I could look it up.
If there's something you can send me, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, I could. And also, uh, oh my God, I just had it in my head. Uh, in order to clear it from algae, it is, uh, also natural substance. Uh, I will send it to you.
Yeah, send it to me. That'd be helpful. Yeah.
Okay, thank you ma'am. Thank you. We'll follow up with you. Um, all right. Um, anybody else, uh, online have any public comments they wish to make at this point in time? Please raise your hand or let us know. All right. That being said, that concludes, uh, a public comment. Uh, trustees, any, any final remarks before we move into executive session?
Nope.
Anybody? Uh, deputy mayor?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you.
All right, great. Uh, I make a motion that the, uh, board of trustees move into executive session to, one, uh, receive advice from, uh, the village, legal advice from the village attorney. Uh, two, to discuss, uh, issues of, of litigation. And, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, trustee Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
I will return from executive session. That was five oh, return from executive session.
John, this is Jared. Uh, David is my partner. I think you just ejected him accidentally. I'll ask that he logs back in.
Yes, if he calls back in, I'll let him in. Nice job, Tom. I reckon that.
When in doubt.
Okay, great. I'll see. Uh, would you put this on Elizabeth's desk?
Uh, yes.
Do you know where she?
I, I don't.
Okay. Uh, my wife will show you. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Ms. Delaner. Thank you for coming to the meeting. Okay.
And we're back.
We're back? Okay, uh. Okay, great. Okay, great. Uh, um, I hereby move that the board of trustees adjourn the public meeting at, uh, nine oh eight PM. Do I have a second?
Second, is there anything we need to report?
No, no.
Right.
Uh, second by trustee Brooke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.